Do you think Norwich will be bringing all those, you know, maps again?
I don't think they're gonna, I think they're gonna do the, I think so, yeah.
What do you think about the, after we back, what we have, like tripods that we could work out for their last thing on the face?
Well, that's not so far.
We have a bunch of things about it last meeting, I was like, could be using those.
Um, I don't know if we'll need to look at those or not. I mean, everybody has got some plans and stuff like.
Um, we've got people coming in that we know are gonna talk about maps or something. If I know how to handle them, that'll.
Hi Karen. Hello, Mr. Birdman.
I think there are more than one of them saying, be happy to donate these.
Would somebody that signed in let us know if you can hear us? It's not good, is it?
They're all new then.
Yeah, no, they should hear us.
I can hear you.
Ah, bless you.
I can hear you.
Thank you, sir. Jack.
Okay, it's 6:30, I follow the meeting to order. We do have a form. And there's one more. Uh, so tonight we have two items, um, three actually, um, on the agenda. We have the two applications that are pending before us for a commercial industrial district rezoning. That's Norwich Solar and Cushion Storage. And we also have a discussion with North Star Planning about implementation of Article 2003. And that will follow our conversation about the two CID applications. Um, just, uh, by way of background, just to summarize and bring everyone back up to see, you know, where we are with this. Um, we found these, uh, both of these applications complete on November 14th. We scheduled a public hearing and, uh, the applications and the hearing hearings were noticed in accordance with Article 9 requirements. The public hearing is held on the 12th of December. Uh, we only have one, uh, member of the public who, um, appeared at that hearing. And that was one of the abutaries to Mr. Cushion's property. Um, and she spoke, um, generally in support and as I recall was mostly interested in understanding what the conversation was and hearing, uh, what the planning discussion was about around the applications. It was announced at that public hearing that we would keep the record open for additional time in the event that any additional, um, innocent parties wanted to comment. Uh, we received no additional comment as a result of that. And the, uh, the record was closed on Thursday, the 21st of December. Um, tonight, uh, our purpose is to deliberate on these applications. And possibly, um, vote to either recommend the applications, uh, to recommend with conditions or not to recommend. And as you recall, um, if we do vote to recommend, uh, either or both of the applications, those, uh, recommendations would be forwarded to the select board, um, who have already begun a discussion about a possible special town meeting, uh, to accommodate those applications. Um, the ordinance calls for the planning board to evaluate the applications in terms of the four specific standards set in Section 2 of Article 9. So I would, uh, suggest, uh, that our discussion tonight should be focused on those four standards uh, in terms of the specifics of, of each of these, these applications. So if the planning board determines that the applications, uh, conform to those standards, um, we would, uh, potentially recommend or recommend with conditions uh, that the select board proceed to, to special town meeting. Um, the planning board can, can set conditions, um, you know, if, uh, in the event the planning board decided to recommend an application, we can set conditions on that recommendation. Um, but it is important to remember, and we've talked about this before, that what we're talking about here is strictly the rezoning recommendation. And if rezoning to a commercial industrial district ultimately is approved, and that happens, the specifics of the projects themselves would still be subject to site review and we would see them again in that context. So a lot of the details that might be of interest, uh, to everyone are details that we'll have the opportunity to discuss when we get to site review. Um, are there any, uh, any questions or comments about the process and how we're going to proceed before we get into that?
You said that there were, there were no additional comments during the extended period?
Yeah, there were not. So, yeah, that one comment that we had from, um, I'm sorry, I don't remember the, uh, the woman's name, but the abutter to John Cushion's property, that was the only outside comment that was received. Um, so, um, that being the case, um, I would, uh, open the discussion on the Norwich solar application. Uh, the first, uh, order of business is to formally close the public hearing. So I would. Discussion? All those in favor? Jack?
Did you say Jack?
I, I did say Jack, you didn't hear me now. Um, okay, uh, and John, um, you, you will be voting, John, because we don't have a full complement of, of members.
Okay.
And so, uh, the vote, um, so your vote.
I vote to close the public hearing.
And Jack, are you there?
I'm sure that's Jack, I've seen a J.
Jack Homer. Oh, there he is. Uh, Jack, did you hear the motion?
Yeah, I, I support it. Yes.
Okay, so once you announce. Okay, so the four, um, hopefully everyone has had a chance to look at the applications, you know, in terms of those standards. Uh, the four, the four specific standards are in Section 2 of Article 9. And they are, "The proposed zoning change shall be consistent with the Town of Reedfield Comprehensive Plan and shall be in keeping with the town's rural character. The proposed use shall be compatible with the surrounding area with respect to rural character, existing uses, and anticipated development. The proposal shall serve the public good, safety, and welfare of the Town of Reedfield, and the proposal shall be protective of all natural resources, including significant wildlife habitat." So I, I would start the discussion, uh, by, uh, pointing out that for the Norwich solar application, pages one through four of their application um, outlines their responses, um, essentially to those, to those four standards. And the other thing that I would mention at the, at the beginning of this discussion, um, you may not have received it because I, I didn't, uh, send it to all of you until the second noon, but I received from, uh, Dave Ledoux, the assessor, um, a response to the question that was raised, um, by Henry. And I think you also, um, raised the question, Brandon, about, uh, the tax implications of the solar development. And so I did send that, um, and that came up, as I recall, in the context of the standard uh, having to do with serving the public good, safety, or welfare of the Town of Reedfield. And so there had been some conversation about whether or not the town would actually be getting tax money, um, from this. And, um, Dave's email responds to that question that I posed to him.
Paul, I had a question I could address to you, Chip, but, but am I correct that this, that interchange with tax? And on the tactical personal property tax only? Uh, personal property or equipment tax or whatever you want to call it?
Yeah.
Not realistic, you know, he, he addressed both.
Yeah, he did. He, he mentioned both of those things in response to the question. And, um, in terms of the, uh, the real estate, he said that with the other solar project and likely with this one as well, he would change their, um, their designation, uh, to commercial, which changes their tax rate. So that's, that's one piece of it. And then the second piece is that for, uh, solar projects of this size, there is a state reimbursement program. And, uh, that has to do with the, uh, the equipment piece of it.
Yeah, I read it, and so, so 50% of the personal property tax the town can otherwise collect will be reimbursed to it by the, by the state.
By the state, correct.
But meanwhile, on the real estate side, it, it'll, it can be, it'll be assessed as a commercial, uh, facility.
Right.
So we're not, uh, if I'm understanding this correctly, uh, the real estate tax collection will go up.
Yes.
And on the personal property side, we weren't getting any, the personal property tax on that land as it is. And we're getting back from the government, the state government, some money.
Right, right. Your taxes are gonna pay your taxes.
So, anyway, that's the, you know, that's the answer to that question as it was raised. So, um, in terms of the, uh, the first standard, uh, there is, uh, there is information in the application that, um, addresses the applicant's review of the comprehensive plan. And, um, I think we've, you know, we've had some opportunity to talk about that and to, and to read it. But it's clear that, um, Norwich, um, examined the comp plan, um, looked at, you know, associated maps, um, and, um, uh, made the case that their proposal is, um, is, is cited in an appropriate zone. And, uh, there was a, a fair bit of explanation, um, in the application, um, about the connection to the comp plan and how they saw it being consistent with that document. So I would open it up for, uh, conversation, um, around that standard, if there are any comments. Um, and it would be very helpful to hear from everybody in terms of, you know, your, your perspective on whether or not, uh, you believe the applicant, you know, met their burden, uh, with regard to that standard, all the standards.
I don't need to be the first to speak, but this is the rural district we're talking about, right?
Correct.
Um, and I looked at the definition again in Section, um, is it Article 7, Section 4 of the Land Use Ordinance about what can be allowed and what's allowed in the rural district? And, um, it, it talks about obviously rural agricultural uses, natural resources uses, but also says "The rural district also accommodates certain commercial and light industry uses and strives to maintain a development pattern of mixed, low-density use while protecting critical natural and scenic resources." It, again, that's just my opinion, it's interesting, uh, this kind of project, solar generation project of this nature is a low intensity, it's a commercial use obviously, but it's the low intensity in terms of the impacts in many ways. Um, so I think it fit, I'm not saying, and we don't have to judge ultimately today how, whether the details are correct or shouldn't be changed, maybe they should be down the road. But in terms of meeting whether this project could fit within the, the current area, whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, yeah, I think it is.
I would, I would certainly agree with you on that, on that point. The rural district, again, as it was set up in the ordinance and in the comp plan, was intended to accommodate a range of different, different uses. And, um, certainly including solar.
I could see a lot of industrial uses that would be inappropriate in the rural district, but I don't think this is one of those.
Other, other comments about this standard? Anyone?
I, I read back through, uh, the applicant's take on it, and I, I can agree with what their conclusions were. Concur with Peter's model, I think it is consistent with the wholesome comprehensive plan.
I agree with the comments that have, that have been made.
Okay, um, there is nothing more. Let's move on to the second standard, which is "The proposed use shall be compatible with the surrounding area with respect to rural character, existing uses, and anticipated development." Um, as I read back through the application, um, you know, I found in this case as well, uh, that the applicant, um, made what I thought was an appropriate argument about the nature of this development and listed a number of ways in which they viewed it to be compatible with the surrounding area with respect to rural character, et cetera. Um, a big part of that in this case is all of the, uh, conversation that we had around the location of this solar project. Um, it is, um, out of sight basically. Um, uh, it will not be seen from Route 17, and there is a pretty significant buffer all the way around it. And it was 700 plus feet from the nearest existing structure, as I, as I recall. So those were some of the major points that they made about the capacity. Others on that? Other comment? Any disagreement? Anyone find it incompatible?
Thank you, Karen.
All right, the third standard, "The proposal shall serve the public good, safety, and welfare of the Town of Reedfield." Um, and the, uh, the points that were raised by the applicant around this standard primarily had to do with the, the nature of the project, the fact that it was a solar project, um, that it, um, did not have climate impacts, uh, that it would be providing clean energy, um, to main people, um, potentially including people in Reedfield. And we also had the conversation, uh, as we, we just got into a few minutes ago, about the possible tax implications and whether or not the project would bring money into, into the Town of Reedfield in that way.
Do you have a question on that?
Yeah.
So, is it just the solar array that gets taxed commercial, or is it the entire, almost eighty acres?
The, um, the real estate is taxed commercially.
The entire eighty acres, now that that's, or just the solar part?
Um, I assume it's the eighty acres because that's the piece that we're rezoning to commercial and industrial.
Should be, yeah, I assume so.
I mean, that would, that would make sense to me. I didn't ask him that question specifically, though.
Well, uh, just, uh, a question, Paula, what is the, the tax rate for commercial property?
I have no idea, John. I, I don't have the answer to that.
Well, this, this, this appears to be, to me, um, clearly in the public good. And, um, yeah, I think it's gonna benefit Reedfield. Hopefully by allowing people to, to take advantage of the, uh, ability to, to, um, plug into the solar, um, array.
The others on this, on the standard, any other thoughts, comments? Okay, the final standard, "The proposal shall be protective of all natural resources, including significant wildlife habitat." Um, on this point, um, the applicant had put forward that they had looked at, um, existing town maps. They consulted with Fish and Wildlife. They also consulted with the Natural Areas Program, um, in terms of anything that might, um, be on that site of significance and require protection. And, um, there was, there was nothing identified by those agencies. The only other issue that I can remember that came up in, in, in the context of this standard was about prime agricultural soils. There was some conversation around that as well. And, um, the applicant had responded to that by, uh, looking at soils maps and, um, identifying that there was a small area of, um, I forget the designation, but it was agricultural soil, not prime, but agricultural soil. But that piece of property was not being developed, um, as part of the solar array project. And, um, um, it would remain agricultural. And the applicant also intended, uh, likely to, um, initiate some kind of agricultural activity on the portion of the site that's not being developed for, for solar.
Whatever, whatever soils are there, um, the, I, I presume that the application is going to include controls for runoff, um, of the property such, so that the soils will likely remain there, is that correct?
Uh, uh, yes, uh, there was some discussion in the application about implementing, you know, all necessary required erosion, sedimentation controls. And, uh, that's another, uh, instance, uh, John, where I think there, you know, there's a little bit of overlap between these standards and the standards that we look at for site review. Because we'll also be talking about that and the detail of it during the site review process if we, if we get to that one.
Sure.
One of the aspects of this kind of project, as compared with, as opposed to like a wind turbine project, is that there shouldn't be any risk to wildlife created by the structures themselves. In fact, there's not even gonna be, um, isn't the major feeder line, I don't, I'm using the wrong term, the feeder line that goes, eventually the road is gonna be buried for most of that.
Yeah, they did propose to bury.
We're not even, haven't got over headlines of any great standard.
And the other, the other thing that, um, we required of the other project and is generally required of solar projects is, uh, the fencing is required to be elevated to a certain, uh, height to allow small animal passage. So that will be something else that we talk about every second. Other, other comments? Any other points of discussion around any of the standards that anyone wants to raise?
I just wanna raise one thing. I think it's in here, but the, the, because decommissioning, the land will be returned to its original state when the project is done with.
Right. And so that, your point being that that also speaks to Standard D.
Right, and, and also to the maintaining the rural character. But I, I didn't see it mentioned, I was just glancing at what they submitted and I didn't see it mentioned, but I, I know they, they had been mentioned it at the hearing. That the, due to decommissioning, the land will be returned to its natural state.
Okay. Um, other, other comments, any further discussion about the standards? Or any other aspect of this application, if there's anything that, um, that you've identified that you think we should talk about further? Okay, um, you know, uh, as we've talked about these, um, you know, my, my own view, my personal view is that, um, each of these four standards, uh, has been met by the applicant. Um, I don't recall either tonight or earlier us discussing ways in which they were not, uh, consistent with these standards. And, um, um, if there is agreement around that, um, as I mentioned earlier, we have the option of voting to recommend the application, uh, to recommend it with conditions or not to recommend it. And, uh, if it is recommended, uh, that is what we forward to the select board for their action. So.
Can I just ask? I'm sorry, could I just ask, I mean, uh, I, I, you know, sitting here right now, I can't really think of any conditions that we would want to place on, on it with respect to the select board deciding whether or not to rezone the property. But it may be that as part of the site review of the application or the, the, uh, app, the, the review of the, of the application, that there might be conditions that we would wanna put on that. But that's a separate thing, right?
Right, right. And, um, uh, let me, let me clarify, um, the select board's decision is not whether to approve the rezoning or not. Um, the, the select board would receive the planning board's recommendation. And it would be their responsibility, uh, to, uh, determine if and when to send it to town meeting for final approval, which is the, the final step in the Article 9 process.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I knew I had to go to a vote. I know I had to go to a vote.
So the planning board's vote would be um, not on the details of the project, but whether to recommend. Um, forwarding um. This proposal to the select board, um, requesting that they take a final vote at town meeting. Um, and it it on on the point, I'm glad you raised the point of the standard, uh, of the conditions, John, because. Um, you know, I think most of the conditions, we've talked a little bit about certain conditions that could be placed on an application like this, but. I think most of the the topics that we got into talking about a little bit would be things that we will discuss during the site review process. You know, when we get to that point. And you know, as we found, there is, you know, a bit of overlap here. But I would suggest that maybe we want to include something like the. Uh, not exactly the same, but something akin to standard condition number one. Uh, in the L U O, and that's basically a condition that says, um, you can only do what you proposed to do and what was approved. And any deviation, anything different has to come back to the planning board. And so I think I would suggest that, you know, we could attach that kind of a condition and make it clear. That anything that they did not propose in the application would have to come back for uh for further review. And I think it could also be an opportunity to include something about, you know, the um. Uh, making it clear that the the planning board uh would go through the site review process and may. Require modifications or changes to any of the details at that point as well.
Yeah, I I think if you, if you're putting a a condition on our, you know, what we recommend to the select board. That what the condition that like you suggested, that would go to. A condition for the they for the rezoning. Because i- it's like the, it's a condition of. Rezoning the property that you're going to do what it is that you said you're going to do.
Right.
Seems to me.
Yeah, I agree. And others on that? Okay, well, if there is no further comment, um, any other, any other issues, perspectives, um. We are ready for motion. Yeah. And as I mentioned, it could be a motion to recommend, recommend with conditions or not to recommend.
Well, I would move to to um recommend with the condition that you spoke about, Paula.
Okay. And just to repeat, that would be a condition, I don't have the words, but I can fashion something and it would be to limit. Limit development in the in the rezoned area to that which was presented um in the in the application. And nothing beyond that without additional uh review and approval.
My business, I'll second the motion.
Okay, Bill seconds, um, just got the.
So it does say in the L U O that that they have to get the site review anyway.
Right.
So so in effect, the management in the L U O does limit them to what they're proposing, what they've gotten. Proved. Right. If if it be no change. They would, they would have to get a site review for any change.
Yeah, they they would, um, the. The example that comes to mind for me is um. Um, actually, it was part of the discussion that we had with John Cushing about his proposal. And um, uh, I remember him saying one night that uh. Um, he wouldn't be proposing anything additionally on that parcel anyway, because there's no more room. You know, for for anything else. Um. In the zoning context, it could limit a proposal to um. In John's case, um, it limits it to just storage buildings. You know, he 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 would not be able to come in and say, oh, I've changed my mind and I want to build a. I don't know, a billiard spiral or something, something else under under the uh. Under the zoning approval.
Yeah, it strikes me if we were starting from scratch. If we, it might be worse than to have site reviewed before we get to this stage, but that's not how the law reads. So I think we are clear to, all we're doing here is. If we are doing it, it's recommending. That the area be rezone consistent with the terms and limitations of the application reports. And then, but that there's no, obviously, we're not approving the application yet, uh, that's subject to site review.
Right. We have a motion to recommend um with a standard condition, uh, limiting development. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? John?
Yes, can you see me?
Yes, and Jack?
Yes.
Okay, all right, it's unanimous. Thank you very much to the Norwich people, um, for all your your work and your patience with this process. We we appreciate it. Um, and uh, what, uh, we'll talk about this later in the meeting, but you may not be here for that. Um, what I will likely do is draft up the results of tonight's discussion and the vote. Uh, in the form of a memo, uh, that the planning board would send to the select board. Um, outlining the recommendation and the reasons for it. And um, that will be shared um with with you, Cara and and Martha. I can't tell you exactly when, um, but that will be, that will be shared. Um, and the tentative plan was to try to get a memo completed. Um. So it can be sent to the select board for consideration at their meeting on the twenty second of January.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your, all of your time and and all of your review. It's been um very informative. And we'll look for your memo.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's move on to uh the Cushing Storage Application and follow a similar. Pattern for discussion, uh, looking at each of the core standards, um, in terms of the. Um, application that John Cushing had put before us. Uh, and again, uh, first order of business, um, I would take a motion to formally close the public hearing before we get into deliberation.
So move, second is.
Discussion on that motion? Not, all those in favor? John, Jack?
Yes. Chris?
Okay. So, um, the Cushing application um was presented a little bit differently than the. Uh, they're two very different applications, obviously. And the Cushing application was presented on the application form. Um, that was developed for the CID purpose. And in reviewing this again, um, I was looking specifically at. On the application form, um, the lead numbers ten through thirteen. And sixteen and seventeen. Um, address. In different ways, those four section two standards uh that are relevant here. So number ten, which is on page two of the application, um, speaks. Specifically to um, the comprehensive plan and uh consistency with it. And um, on the application form, it is pointed out that. The proposed commercial industrial district um is located in a growth area. Um, as is put forward in the plan, um, and that appears on the future land use map in the in the comprehensive plan. Um. I'm also aware that there were a number of other maps and sections of the comp plan that the applicant had reviewed. Um, with respect to location of various natural features, um, wildlife habitat, um. Species, uh, et cetera. And those were linked uh to some extent to the to the comp plan. And um, in each of those cases, um, it was, it was found that. The application was consistent with what the conflict put forward. Um. Uh, we have worked um with the applicant in this case a little bit to try to provide information on. Uh, just on sections of the comprehensive plan that we thought might be relevant in some way to this proposal. And uh, they gave a review of all of those sections in response. So any um, comment, um, respective discussion about the comp plan? As it relates to the Cushing application?
Um, Paula, is this, it is a growth area, I know, I can't. Put my hands on it. I've read that application more than once and I can't see it at the moment. Is this? Is it currently in the village residential or or zone?
No, it's uh village.
Village, oh, village, so. An area which we, where we expect to see commercial development.
Correct, yeah.
And obvious, again, this is a, at least in my opinion, a low impact. Commercial development, uh, given it should not be a high traffic adding to buildings. To storage structures should not. Uh, create a huge surge in traffic, certainly not in pollution or noise. So I see it as certainly consistent, uh, the plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I think some of those comments also speak to the um, the standard B, um. Which is covered in uh the Cushing application and number eleven and twelve, and that has to do with, you know, compatibility with. With um, the surrounding area. And um, some of the factors that were mentioned there are um, the location of the buildings. Uh. We talked a number of times about how there is a a downhill grade on that piece of property. That uh, and the the buildings, uh, the existing building, uh, one of them and the new building will be, will be built. Downhill, um, limiting view of that development from Route Seventeen. And um, there are buffers around the property. That um also hide it from view from um, abiding property owners. Um, and, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I want to mention that I think another good thing about this project is it takes what would be three separate warehouse facilities. Around town and sort of combines them into one location. That screen, as you mentioned. So it's a good use of the land there. To consolidate these facilities in one location.
And this was also a case where I know the um, uh, the town maps were also reviewed by the applicant in terms of um. You know, natural features, wildlife habitat and so forth, and um, there was uh, nothing um. That required any special protection, um, that was located on this, on this parcel.
Compared compared with what's uh, what's already there, the storage facility that's already there. Uh, wha- the this proposal, um. I know it's a, this is, the proposal is for rezoning, but but what? They want to build there, is that going to double it or what is the relationship between? Uh, what's existing there right now and what will, what will be the finished um development?
I, John, I don't remember the number, but your existing storage building that's down on the hill, how many square feet was, what was that one?
Hundred by twenty? Um. It's five thousand square feet, we have to do both buildings, we did this before, so between both buildings, five thousand square feet. And the other two buildings, a hundred by fifty and a hundred by twenty.
Does that recall whole thing? I mean, while, when I was setting down, it was around twelve thousand square feet.
Yes, it had to be the whole thing, mine, I believe you're right, twelve, ground, twelve thousand.
Yeah, so the, you know, the existing development was just bumping up to five, five thousand square feet. Because that's the trigger for having to do the district thing. And with the new building that's proposed, it's around twelve thousand.
That's, that's in addition to the five thousand that's there?
Right, right. Well, it, you know, it includes, it includes the five thousand, yeah.
Oh, I see. Now, what what uh, what the the comment that Jack was making or or? You mean, there's other facilities around town that are going to be consolidated here on this property?
I'm just saying he's, he's locating all the facilities in one location. Rather than building.
Oh, yeah.
There's around town.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, that that's good.
Yeah.
I was just trying to think, I I I, my my question was rooted in the idea that is this going to really, you know, change what it looks like there? Um. I mean, I'm sure it will, but it, but it's, it doesn't sound to me to be that big of a change.
Well, indeed, I don't believe that we have changed visible from the road. Barely visible.
Um, you know, I think everyone was was quite surprised, actually, when, you know, the first storage building was built down over that bank. And a lot of people never even noticed it, um, I had to look for it, you know, when I understood it was there, finally, I had to look for it. Um.
I'm not sure I've seen it.
You won't see it.
Okay, um. The uh, standard C, uh, the proposal shall serve the public goods, safety or welfare of the town of Reedfield. Um, what was put forward in the application was discussion about. Um, the the need um uptown residents for storage. And we had some conversation around that during uh previous meetings and. Um, you know, interestingly, um, there is a lot of storage space that that is being used. And um, I I remember John saying that he was pretty much full and needed more. Um. And. I think that um. The bulk of the, you know, the argument around this standard was about the needs of town residents for that storage capacity. And how this proposal um would um allow that to to be built to accommodate them. and how this proposal would allow that to, to be built to accommodate them. And in similar fashion for the other application, I'm sure there are some tax implications. There would be additional tax money coming in, but, you know, I don't know the specifics of that, but I think we can assume that that is true. So other, other points around this standard or conversation?
I was just gonna say, people need storage, that's good.
Yeah, clearly, there's, there's a perceived public need. This end capacity will serve that need. And I think also, although it doesn't, I think it's relevant to say there's no downside, there's no real public, it's not like we're making, you're making a product that pollutes the air when you're making it. There's no downside to adding some more storage space that's going to hurt the public well.
Now, I think that was actually similar to part of the argument that was made for the solar project as well, that there, you know, it was not a, an activity that would cause impact, negative environmental, health and safety. The final standard proposal shall be protective of all natural resources, including significant wildlife habitat. And that appears, the response to that appears in number fourteen on the application form, which is four three. And it's based on a review of the natural resources maps. No wildlife area designations. And there's discussion about use of all erosion control measures needed to minimize potential impacts. And there is a fair bit of discussion about the buffers that exist on the property that would protect adjacent, adjacent properties and would mitigate noise, lighting, and so forth. Comments? Discussion about that standard? Okay, well, you know, I my view is that each of these four standards has been addressed and, and met. I don't think that there has been any suggestion that the application is not consistent with any of these standards. If anyone disagrees, please speak up at this point. And if there is no further discussion, we're ready for motion. Again, to recommend, recommend the conditions or not to recommend.
I'll move that we make a recommendation for the zoning change to the select board and with the identical condition that we used for match.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Peter?
Pierre, Pierre can do it.
There's a Martin and a Stefan to recommend with the standard condition discussion. Saying none, all those in paper? John?
I, yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, John, for the work of helping us through this application.
You know, you guys are doing the same thing.
Yes. Right, and so we'll work up two separate recommendations to the select board, one for each of the applications. Again, we're, we're hoping, we're targeting the select board meeting on the twenty second of January to, you know, to present that to them. And then, you know, they'll, they'll determine what they want to do in terms of a town meeting and The other item on the agenda for tonight is our initial discussion about LD two thousand three with North Star Planning. And the way I had left it with North Star is that I would text him when we were ready for him, because he's at home and is going to be doing this by his own. And So while we're waiting for him to get along, maybe we could do a quick review, we have one session.
I was gonna thank, thank you for getting to us so soon. And I'm gonna then punish myself as I didn't, didn't answer. I mean, the purpose is that we could have commented before tonight, but I didn't look at it until today. I'm sorry.
Not a problem. So I have, I have just a couple of things I, I wanted to mention in the last paragraph on the first page. Okay. In the second line, it says, leave the record open until five P M. December twenty second, twenty twenty three. And it was December twenty one. Oh, in fact, it was the Thursday, not the Friday. In the second line from the bottom, it, it says, and if the application is approved, gives time for the board to draft their recommendation. And I would suggest scratching if the application is approved, gives time for the board to draft and replace that with, and consider a recommendation to the select board. Because we're not really giving approval, and I, I, it's, it's kind of a fussy point, but I just wanted to make sure it was accurate.
Yeah.
And possibly in time for their regularly scheduled meeting, January twenty second. That's likely going to happen, but we didn't really know that for sure at the time. And it's January twenty seventh, not twenty.
Well, originally, we had it in twenty second, it's changed to twenty one. Did you have other?
No.
I had a couple other picky little things.
Yeah.
One of which, Paula, same as mine, twenty first. Under Norwich Technologies, the third one, fourth line, this is the longest, which says, defined in Article nine requires structures. I wouldn't say, I, I delete the word structures, I would insert the words commercial, comma, industrial, or infrastructure activities. I think that's what Article nine says.
I, let me look, I, I, I was thinking it said structures.
Maybe.
Oh, no, you're, you're right. It says activities in Article nine, but I think it says structures somewhere else.
But if the activities, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm good with that, it does say that.
The, the next next paragraph, last line goes through, it will I would, instead of saying before, I would say apply to, apply to the entire line. I just, that's, that isn't a big deal, but
Yeah.
And then a couple more things. Last paragraph on the page, there has been a lack of public, I would say, well, public, I would say public comment on this application. The, you could say participation, but I mean, they did have the chance to participate.
Right. I know, that one was tough to, that one, which I probably say this. But I think that probably stuck.
And then let's see. Oh, next page. The second paragraph on that page, third to last line, in which case would require electricity to it, but it, well, there, the it, I think what you mean is but the the power lines would run underground, the power, the power lines would run underground, because if we wouldn't know what it means necessarily. That's what he, I think that's what he said.
Yeah.
One more thing, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Under old business, fourth line, the L U Y revisions needed to, I, I, I was saying incorporate, I would say comply with LD two zero 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 three. Maybe next time I'll make my comments in a timely way.
Okay, anyone else, any edits, comments on the minutes? If not, I would take a margin.
Good with all the changes, so I'll move that we have thirty minutes as modified.
There are second?
Second.
Motion, second discussion? All those in favor? John?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jack?
Yes.
And while I've got it in front of me, this is where it says it. This is the, the descriptions of the, the districts, and that's where I remember it from. And then on, on page thirty eight, and it specifically says it's the only district which may accommodate commercial, industrial, or infrastructure uses with structures and accessories. So this, and it says activities in the, in the chapter. So that might be a, a housekeeping thing for L U O revisions.
We can, we can make it structures and activities.
We could, yeah.
Well, I think probably what they meant was activities with structure, it probably did mean with structures and accessories.
I think, I think it did. Anyway. Okay. So, Jamel Torres is with us tonight. Thank you for joining us, Jamel. Jamel is with North Star Planning, and he has done the work on the memo that we received and putting together the draft ordinance revisions in response to LD two thousand three. So our purpose tonight is to hear from Jamel. He's going to talk about the material that he provided to us. This is really the beginning point of our discussion about these changes. We have, you know, a couple of months within which to consider them and to pull together a package that hopefully will go to town meeting this year. And so I'm viewing this first presentation as an introduction to all of this. I think that you know, most of us have a, have a pretty good grasp of the, the basics of this. But I asked Jamel to begin at the beginning, to talk about the legislation and then, you know, describe the work that, that he did to put forward draft revisions and how that fits in with the requirements of the legislation. It'll be an opportunity to ask any questions you have right now. But again, this is just our first conversation around this topic. And we will, we'll be coming back to it several more times to refine it and to make some final decisions ultimately about what we want to include in the L U O. So with that, Jamel.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
I can hear you, you're not very loud, but
Okay, I'll speak a little louder, is that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thanks for having me this evening virtually. My name is Jamel Torres. I'm a senior planner with North Star Planning. We're private, a small private planning consulting firm based out of Pine Wood Farms in New Gloucester, Maine. There's five total planners. And I am working with you all on the LD two thousand three ordinance changes as, as Paula introduced. So I think for this evening, I'm going to just give a brief overview, purpose and scope of the LD two thousand three legislation. And then I'll go into, go through the three sections in the memo that I provided you all related to affordable housing and density bonuses, requirements, and accessory dwelling unit requirements as well, based on the legislation. And then I think we will discuss the proposed modifications in the future, but also happy to discuss them tonight as you wish. So if that all sounds good, and you can hear me fine, I'll just jump right in to a brief overview of the legislation. Does that sound good? Great. So LD two thousand three was actually passed by the state legislature and signed by the governor in twenty twenty two of April twenty twenty two, and it went into effect two summers ago in July of twenty twenty two. And the general idea is to help alleviate housing affordability issues in Maine by increasing housing opportunities. That means a lot of different things in a lot of different Maine communities. Understanding that Portland and Bangor and Lewiston Auburn are much different than Reedfield. So it's a statewide legislation with varying impacts or, or modification requirements in different communities across the state. So LD two thousand three requires several different things. I'm just going to read through this list. And if at any point anybody has questions, please interrupt me. I'd rather this be a back and forth than just a me speaking affair. So it requires towns and cities to increase housing density allowed in, in their zoning ordinances in several different ways. So one, it requires municipalities to allow additional units on lot zone for single family homes. Two, it requires municipalities to allow at least one accessory dwelling unit on lots with existing single family homes. In some areas, it requires municipalities to allow two and a half times the current allowed housing units for development where most of the units meet standard affordability definitions. And that would be within the designated growth areas in Reedfield, which we'll get into in a little while. And again, the extent of the state laws requirements are determined by growth areas, which are typically defined in the community's comprehensive plan. Reedfield's very fortunate to have a very updated comprehensive plan. A lot of smaller Maine communities have plans from the early two thousands. And obviously, a lot has changed since then. Um, a lot of smaller main communities have plans from the early two thousands, um, and obviously a lot has changed since then. Um, so I was pleased to read and understand that Reedfield has a very new, uh, comprehensive plan. I think that's great. So with that, um, that's my high level overview of the legislation. Um, it was actually LD seventeen oh six, um, but it's, it's really, it's well known as, uh, LD two thousand and three. Um, and essentially, um, for municipalities that enact ordinances by voters. Um, it's requiring municipalities to enact the ordinances by July one, twenty twenty four. So that would be, uh, this, this upcoming town meeting cycle for, for Reedfield, uh, which is why I'm, I'm here this evening, I believe. So that's my overview. Uh, happy to answer any questions. I am not a state employee. I am not a state legislation expert. Um, I'm just a community planner, so, um, I'll try and do my best to answer questions, but I may have to refer you. Uh, to the state if it's, you know, a little too, too technical for, for myself. If there are any, oh, go ahead.
I, I, I think it might be, um, helpful, Jamel, if you could, um, go through and just do, uh, you know, a summary of the specific revisions. That you're proposing or you think need to be included, um, in, in the ordinance. We don't need to get into a detailed discussion of all of those tonight, but I think a summary would be helpful to everyone.
Okay, um, in my memo provided to the planning board, there's a section with an overview of LD two thousand and three sections. That starts on page two. Um, I'm just gonna highlight the three sections that are related or relevant to Reedfield. So on page two, uh, there's the affordable housing density bonus. Uh, this section of legislation establishes an automatic density bonus of two point time, two point five times the base zoning for affordable housing developments. Um. That meet the definitions of affordable housing for rental or owner occupied housing. With that said, the majority of units have to be affordable to households whose income does not exceed eighty percent of the median income for rentals. And a hundred and twenty percent median income for owned housing. Um, are in a designated growth area in a state consistent comprehensive plan, or served by public, special district, or other comparable sewer and water systems. So we identified that those, um, districts in your town. Oh, my computer's, in your town are the, uh, village district, village residential and academic zoning districts. Um, for the affordable housing density bonus. Still on page two, um, also, they have to be, the density bonus, it needs to be located in an area where multifamily is allowed. And then I refer to the state guidance document, which is pages five through seven. The multiple dwelling units on any property where housing is allowed is a little different. Um, this requires towns to allow multiple dwelling units on a property where housing is allowed. Um, so towns may not apply different dimensional standards to lots with more than one housing unit. The exception here is that there may be different differential net residential density requirements, but not more restrictive than those are in place in August twenty twenty two.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, dimensional, does that mean? The dimensions of the lot? Like twenty, twenty thousand or forty thousand or eighty thousand square feet?
That's one of them. It would be that and setback requirements, um, for, for the building. So basically, you, you have to allow a certain amount of dwelling units per unit, per, per lot, which we'll get into. Um, but they still have to follow. You, you can't have, you can't say that. You can't have different setbacks for the additional units on the property. They have to meet the existing, um, dimensional requirements.
Including square foot.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the total, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Um, I have a, uh, density bonus question also, um. So a, as I look at this, it seems to be relevant to new development. If someone is, is building new affordable housing, I assume it could also, um, pertain to existing housing. If that housing is being transformed into affordable housing, however that might happen. Um, I mean, if, if there were a cluster of houses, for instance, that are existing, but, um. Someone took those over and, and caused them to be managed in a way where they would be. Deemed affordable housing, then this density bonus would kick in in that situation, too.
He, I believe so, yes. Um. That would, that would work.
To turn something into affordable housing that's existing?
Yeah, we, I would recommend that the town, um, require some sort of deed restriction with the property that gets recorded in the registry of deeds. For a certain number of years, just so kind of as an assurance that it's gonna remain affordable, and it's not just. Um. Uh, someone saying that for the sake of extra density. Does that make sense?
Got a question. Um, these additional units, um. They don't, they're, they'd still all be on the same parcel, so that they wouldn't be subdivided, so subdivision doesn't come into play here?
For the type of development that I was just talking about, um, you could do up to two units on a single lot. Um, but three, three units or more in a five-year period is typically considered a subdivision. So in that case, a, a three-unit proposal would be considered a subdivision, is my understanding.
But not for the outset.
But it would be, but it would be allowed, and in most communities, you, you cannot have that many dwelling units on a property, in one property right now. Single family homes. But it doesn't supersede subdivision. That is also a state law and very relevant to what could be an affordable housing development. That would be required to go through subdivision, so it doesn't just mean that a developer can plop these developments down in your community. It's just, it gives them an extra or a density bonus to allow for additional affordable units. But it doesn't mean that it wouldn't be reviewed by the planning board if, if required now. That's, that's still, that would still be a thing. I'm gonna move on to accessory dwelling units, and then we'll jump into the modifications, um, if the board wishes. So accessory dwelling units, this is page three of the memo. Um, this section allows any lot with a single family dwelling to have an accessory dwelling unit. We call them ADUs. Um, ADUs can be within a home, attached to a home, or in a new structure, such as a lot of folks see them above garages. Um, that's a typical accessory dwelling unit in Maine. Um, and ADUs are also exempt, um, from any net residential density requirements, um, since they're accessory by nature. Uh, towns may have less restrictive requirements, allowing more than one ADU per property, or allowing duplex or multifamily units to also have ADUs. Uh, towns may not have definitions or standards that are stricter than state requirements. And, uh, again, we refer to the guidance document, um, for additional details related to, to ADUs. I've worked with a lot of different communities in Maine, some lake region, um, not this lakes region, but a different lakes region in southern Maine. And, um, there were some concerns related to ADUs and short-term rentals. Um, that was a thing that we had to tackle in the town of Naples. Um, so. We were able to add a provision in the ordinance related to short-term rentals, if that is something that Reedfield is also concerned about. I'm not sure what the climate is, uh, related to that in Reedfield, because I haven't had much experience there, but in Naples, folks were very concerned about that. So we added a provision. Um. So then there's a series of proposed, um, modifications to the Reedfield land use ordinance. Um, North Star Planning staff did an extensive audit of the ordinance. Um, that's how we started the project, looking at the different standards, familiar, familiarizing ourselves with the ordinance. Um, since we don't live and breathe it every day, um, so that took a little bit of time for us to understand. And then we went, um, article by article, um, and, and provided proposed modifications, uh, related to LD two thousand and three. Um, so in the memo, we went page by page, um. Talking about each of the proposed modifications. Um, so at this point, I guess I'll, I'll turn it over. Um, to you, Madam Chair, about how you want to proceed through, through the rest, or if we wanna do some more questions, um, that's up to you guys.
What would everybody find most helpful? Um, we have specific questions. Uh, do you want to go through? Um, each of the, each of the articles and talk about the changes that are being proposed and what, um. What would be not helpful to all of you in terms of understanding this?
I have a, a different kind of question, but, uh, Mr. Torres, I'm not sure. If you're not a lawyer, are you a lawyer?
I am not a lawyer.
Answer what I'm gonna ask. Uh, I looked at the D E C D regulation, the department, uh, in, um, the departmental state regulation. That's the, that's important to implement the statute, and I just wondered if, in, in your organization's opinion, whether it's consistent completely. Where is it with the statute, or does it create issues that go beyond the statute?
Um, I guess to answer your first question, none of us are attorneys at North Star Planning. Um, we're all trained planners, uh, with master's degrees, but we are not attorneys, and I will not pretend to be one. Um, that's never been, that's never leaded, led to good things, uh, for me in my career, so thanks for asking that. Um, we, based on our understanding of the legislation and the Reedfield ordinance, we believe that. What we're proposing is consistent with, with the state regulations. Um, it, we didn't go any further. Um, you can allow. For more, uh, like two or three or four ADUs per lot if you want, um, but we did the, pretty much the bare minimum. At this point, just not really understanding the politics and the lay of the land in Reedfield. We, we start with the minimum requirements, and then we go from there. Um, I. I always think it's a good idea to have ordinances reviewed by the municipal attorney. I would not be offended if the planning board wished to do that.
That, that's always part of our process anyway, before we, um, you know, send a package of ordinance revisions on. Um, we do have the town attorney review them regardless of what they are.
Great, that's, I think that's, that's awesome. Um, if an attorney were to find discrepancies or, or changes that would be required, I think that's a good thing. Um, I would not, that's, I'm totally, I, I think that's great. Um, the more. Um, opinions and legally binding the ordinances, I think the more successful a community will be, um, with planning regulations. So that's not something that we are, um, able to do through our contract with the town of Reedfield. So that, that sounds great, um, I, and I would recommend it. But I, in my opinion, it is consistent with state standards, the way that it's presented to you tonight.
Can I, can I ask a quick question? Um, and this, I think this maybe is more related to, or, or directed to Peter. Uh, um, I, I printed out something that we got from Rebecca McMahon with MMA. And, uh, is this, um, nineteen dash one hundred, chapter five, are those the rules for this?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
It's D E C D rule on the housing opportunity program, so, um.
Those are the rules that we have to comply with in addition to the statute, right?
Yeah, and I, as I understand it, although, you know, the popular, in popular parlance, we talk about LDs, which are the bill numbers. But the actual, you know, statutes that got enacted that we were dealing with, I think, are Title thirty dash A, Sections four, three, six, four. Four, three, six, four, dash A, and Section four, three, six, four, dash B. Yeah, is there, those are the ones that are key, I think, to all this, and maybe I'm omitting something.
No, I think that's all.
Those, uh, state statutes are noted in the memos, um.
The front page of Jamel's memo lists the, those statutory references.
And they're actually clickable on a, if you use them on a computer, it'll take you to the statute.
Good.
So Jamel, is it accurate to say that, um. The changes that you've proposed to the ordinance, um. Address everything that's necessary to comply with the legislation. Um. In a minimal way. Um, we could, we could, we could do something different. We could, um, we could make it, we could make it less restrictive or more, we could, we could change it. But, um, you have put it together with an eye toward meeting the minimum requirements in the legislation. Correct?
I will say in the ADU section, there are, uh, required standards and recommended in our memo, um, as requested. So the recommended ones are North Star's recommendations to, um, allow for an easier or clearer process for ADUs. Um. But they're not required. It would just be the bullets under the required standards that would be to make it consistent with state standards.
And, and what about, um, short-term rentals? Um, that's something that we could talk about at some point. There's nothing in here about short-term rentals, right? Okay, because that is, you know, there is, that is an issue that's come up a number of times. Um, we haven't talked about it specifically as a board recently, but it is something that's come up in a number of different, um, discussions, uh, in town. And it may be something that we want to, um, to include in some fashion.
Yeah, in the town of Naples, like I, uh, noted earlier, we, we added a standard related to the, I think, the minimum length of a lease. Um, and I believe that was sixty days for ADUs. Um, they didn't want to totally squeeze out any potential seasonal workers. Um, in ADUs, so that they chose sixty days for their ordinance, just to allow for a July and August rental. Um, for folks who, uh, move, want to live in the region, uh, just for a summer job or something. Because they're having trouble, um, like a lot of people are, uh, finding employees for, uh, different kinds of. Um, employment such as services and hospitality, um, related to, uh, wake living, or however you wanna put it. So we could talk about that if that's of interest. Um, it's just not in these modifications right now.
You can check.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not elected official, I'm the code officer, but the questions come up quite often, that people are asking about this. And I, I, I would love to do something about short-term rentals, but they're very sacrosanct in towns like this. When you start talking about limiting short-term rentals. Um, we've had the discussion with Airbnb's and short-term rentals. What has to be done by this board is to get the, the LD two thousand and three incorporated in our, in our ordinance. That's, that's the mission here. I'm afraid if we get too much into, or any into, short-term rentals. That that could muddy the waters and make it more difficult to get this exercise done by July this year. That's not to say we couldn't do it in the future, but this exercise from today, so this has, is supposed to be enforced. I, I'd be hesitant to make that, you know, one of your goals, just my opinion. I'd like to hear your opinion.
My opinion?
Yeah.
Um. Anytime, in my experience as a planner, anytime, uh, the, the term short-term rental comes up. Uh, it can really prolong a process. Um, it's a very passionate subject. It's very complicated. It's evolving. Um, I would, I agree with, uh. With the code officer, with chips, thank you, uh, as well. I think that it's a very important subject, but you could spend an entire. It's a very important subject, but you could spend an entire year on short-term rentals and not get anywhere. I may have done that in the past, and I may still be scarred by that process. So I just wanted to mention that we. We did. As we, per a request of a community, we did add a standard related to it. But it wasn't my suggestion that we try and regulate them through, through these modifications. It was just a editorial note. Because Naples is also in a lakes region. I know it's much different than this one, and probably a little busier. At times, but I, you know, there. It's a lakes region and it, it did come up. So I just wanted to, to be clear about that.
There isn't anything in this legislation that we're trying to address here that. Is, is. Would, would require us to change our L U O based upon short, or about short-term rentals, is there?
No, there's not.
Jamel, I might correct that nothing in the state law or rule. Changes the ability of municipalities to maintain minimum lot size requirements. I'm sorry, for one unit.
Correct, yep.
But we could, we could choose to do that. To. We could choose theoretically to reduce the minimum lot size requirement if we wanted.
I think that they, you know, it's a real, it's really hard to, to govern. A state with such diverse or varying communities. Well, I guess every state's like that, but. I think that they were pretty careful. To require certain things, like requiring to lower your minimum lot size. But certain communities certainly are doing that, usually larger ones with denser centers. Larger communities, but you're more than welcome. If that's what the community wishes to do, you can, you can lower your minimum lot size if you wish. As long as you can still meet septic and water requirements. Which would be part of the planning board or building permit process.
Now, I don't remember what's in the comprehensive plan specifically, but, you know, there had been some discussion about. You know, achieving certain policy goals through such things as adjusting lot sizes and densities and. I think that's something we should probably review, or those sections in the conplan. And see if any of them relate specifically to what we're, we're looking at here. And make sure that we're headed in a direction that's consistent with the conplan. Other, other questions for Jamel?
I had, I had a question about ADUs, and I'm looking at this on my phone, so I, I might be missing part of it, but. Do you? So you have an owner-occupied dwelling, and then you have the ADU. And. If the owner. Sells. You're recommending that the buyer abide by the. Sort of. Arrangement that it's still one piece of land and they're occupying. The piece of land with the owner of the land, right?
We didn't, it's a recommendation. Some communities have owner occupancy requirements, some do not. It was our recommendation to not have that based on the. Purpose of the legislation. A lot of communities have occupancy requirements. It's not abnormal for ADUs. But generally, if there is an occupancy requirement, it would, it would be transferred in the sale with, with, and the deed would reflect that.
You're not recommending because it's sort of a hard thing to police? And it, and, and this is to create more housing. It doesn't matter who owns the housing.
That's the general goal of the legislation. I'm not a code officer, but maybe Chip could, could answer that in terms of. Enforcing owner occupancy related to ADUs.
Go on.
Could you clarify, is the whole idea of the omnibus then? That the state's supposed to have over everything that could veto anything we do if we don't do it right according to them? So if we don't do this exercise right, and somebody doesn't like the way the board rules that it can go to this. Omnibus then before it goes to the Board of Appeals, or maybe to the courts. Is that idea still in here? And how do we protect ourselves?
So are you asking if, say, Reedfield said, never mind, we don't want to do this? Like, what would happen?
No, more along the lines that we, we had an opening there, for example, just like we talked about. You know, restricting, you know, making smaller lot size. Something that a good land use lawyer could come in and say, that doesn't go along with these new state statutes, and they could go. Directly to the state omnibus. That was a scary thing that was in there. I'm not sure if I saw that made it into the law.
And that hasn't happened in my experience. Lawyers are capable of almost anything. I'm not sure if. If the state. The state's requiring these changes before July of twenty twenty-four. I'm not sure what kind of enforcement they're gonna do. If they're not totally. Conforming. I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know if the town, if the state has the resources to patrol. However many communities there are in Maine. Although you guys are really close to Augusta, so maybe you'd be lucky.
So Jamel, I, I wanted to go back to the ADU because in the draft language that you proposed, it says the owner must occupy. The, the single-family dwelling unit of the ADU as their legal residence. But I thought you were saying that. You didn't recommend owner occupancy.
We. It's not a requirement in the standard, in the state law, and we generally are trying to follow that and. Create more housing in communities. But we could, we put it in there because pretty much all of our communities require it. So we started there. We can always get rid of it. But we've started, we used to start without it, and then every community asked for it. So we've just started putting it in from the beginning now. But it's not a requirement.
And also likewise, you didn't propose the maximum size.
We. We think, I, I think a maximum, we did propose a maximum size. It's in three. B three, it's seven hundred square feet. I think some communities do.
That's the maximum?
Seven hundred is the proposed maximum. You guys can change it. I think the highest I've seen is a thousand square feet. Some communities do percentage of. Of the primary, but, you know, if there's a ten thousand square foot house, then you could have. You know, a percentage of that house. So it. We thought capping it at a number such as seven hundred square feet would maintain affordability for these units. You know, if you had a two thousand square foot ADU, I'm not really sure. How affordable or accessible that would be for most people.
And they, when you use the term floor area, you're using it as we use it in our. You're not using footprint. You're using total floor area of however many stories it is.
We use square feet because the state statute requires a minimum of a hundred and ninety square feet, so we maintained. Square feet in the language. We're happy to, to change it to be more consistent with Reedfield's language.
You say minimum floor area of a hundred and ninety square feet. Floor area in our ordinance is total usable space.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, that's what we're, that's what we're proposing for, for the measurement. I guess I'd ask the code officer if that's. A good way to do it. But it seems like it's pretty reasonable to us.
Jamel, would you point me to what page in your report and get to that seven hundred foot maximum, seven hundred square foot maximum? Thank you.
Sure, it's page nine. We created a new section, section twenty-nine for ADUs. It'd be section twenty-nine. B three.
Thank you.
Yep, and we can go through. Each section of modifications. We can do that at a future meeting if folks want to review them more. I'm, I'm pretty much happy to do this however you want. I think we should probably go through section by section to be. To make sure that we get through everything in a. In a good way. But again, we can. We can keep just doing Q and A right now, and I can come back to another meeting, and we can really dive into the changes, or we can dive into them. Whenever you would like. I just, I'm not really sure. You know, where the planning board is in terms of reviewing the modifications so far.
Now, I, I think it would be, you know, I, I was viewing this meeting as an opportunity for you to, you know, put the information out. Have our initial discussion, get any questions that are on the table right now answered. And then come back at a later meeting and talk more specifically about the language and the sections. One thing I'd find helpful in preparing for that, though, if, if you're able to identify for us. Either certain provisions or pages or, or issues. Where you think that there are decisions that the board. Either needs to make or should make, you know, the, some of the numbers that we just talked about, now for instance, those, those could be changed. If, if there are places that you could identify where. That might be the case, where we'll need to come back and, and think further and, and actually, you know, come to a. A decision about some of the information here. That would help me, I know.
That sounds good. Good idea.
Yeah, like what is it that we have to do versus what is it that where we have a choice?
Okay, I could put. I'll think about that approach, but initially, I think the way we, we put together the ADU. Part of the memo with required and recommended. Might be a good way to, to do that with the other ones. We're happy to do that. Generally, though, is the memo, is a memo. Read cleanly, was it, was it able, were you guys able to follow it? In terms of the page numbers and were you guys, was that a good way for you guys to refer to? The changes that we made, but was that, did that work for people?
I was good with it.
It took us like three communities to get here, so. We're, we're, we're heading in the right direction. Good.
Are you going north?
I believe. My Ben, the owner of the company, is working with Dover Foxcroft and Matawaska. I don't think you can go much further north than Matawaska, so. That's all Zoom meetings as well. It's way too far away to. Include travel and any sort of realistic budget. But for me, this is the furthest north that I've worked on LD two thousand and three so far.
Appreciate your help.
Yeah, thanks for having me. We're excited to, to work with the town of Reedfield. I have some. Personal connections there. My father-in-law has a place. In Reedfield, so we're there. In the summer quite often, so it was nice to. To be able to work with you guys.
So in terms of a, a second, a second discussion. There is something you can, you can provide to us about, you know, the way, the way John put it, was what we, you know. What we must do versus some of the options that we have. I think that information would be, would be helpful to us in figuring out where we need to focus our discussion. And if you could provide that to us. Others chime in here, but I'm, I'm thinking that. We may need some time to look at all of this and to look, you know, to look at what you provide us. In, in terms of the, you know, the options versus the must-dos. And I'm thinking. Perhaps about the first meeting in February. Is being best time to do that. Others, I don't know if you have thoughts about that, but.
So what's our, sort of our drop dead, it's at the back end?
Yeah, there's, there's a little, I don't, I don't have the dates right in front of me. I've had a couple of discussions with Eric about. You know, the, the required timeframes for, you know, getting it. To the select board and the warrant articles and so forth, and. We're in a somewhat. You know, better position with it because we will have to hold a public hearing on it, you know, whatever we decide to do. Before we send it off to them. So that piece will be done. There is a hearing on warrant articles, but that's, that's kind of a different thing. I'll bring, I'll bring those dates. I've, I've got all of that, and I, I just don't, I don't have it with me right now, but. I think, I'm thinking like the end of. The end of March is kind of the drop dead, as I recall. I don't remember the specific date.
Do we have anything set for the next meeting?
In two weeks?
Right.
No, you had that one application, right? But that, you told me about a lot merger thing. Is that for the next meeting or for later?
They're discussing it with Mary Dennis.
Okay, all right, so it's not for the next meeting.
Do we try to do something the next meeting on part of this?
Well, we could. I mean, if everyone feels comfortable that, you know, two weeks is enough time to do, you know, the review that we want to do at this point. We, we could schedule it for, for two weeks.
And I, I won't be.
You won't be here. Others that. Everyone else think you're going to be here? Twenty-third. You said you would be, John, and you wouldn't be.
Yes, I'll, I'll be here.
I'll be here.
I, I will be here.
You will be here. And Jack?
Yes, I'll be here. We could take. One issue like ADUs and. Or, or. Some other issue on that at the next meeting. Break it up a little bit.
Okay, well, you want to do it that way? You want to make the focus of our conversation on the twenty-third? ADUs? And just do that piece?
If he, if there's, if that gives enough time to get. The must-dos and options to us.
In terms of, of timing, should we be looking at two weeks or the first meeting in February? Jamel?
Are you asking me or Jack? Sorry.
Do you, do you think two weeks is enough time for you to get that to us and for us to have time to review it? The other option we have is, is to, you know, to rearrange our meeting dates. We could do the first week in February instead of. Something like that, if it became necessary.
Yeah.
I could, I can modify the memo. You, you send out packets a week in advance, right?
No, roughly.
So we'll, we'll aim for that by end of the day on the sixteenth, so I could carve out some time to make the memo a little clearer. So yeah, that, I think I could, I could aim to have revised materials for the sixteenth. That's possible on my end, but again, that would give you a week to review. I'm happy to do that or wait until February and then we can hopefully meet several times in a row.
Yeah.
So totally up to you guys. It's probably unhelpful, but I really don't want to tell you how to run your meeting, so.
Well, I'm happy to do whatever the majority wants to do. Personally, I'd be more comfortable doing it in February and having a bit more time to to do the review, but if you want to go ahead and do it sooner.
We can do February. I just, you know, Don raised the point about, you know, we don't want to back up the deadline. And also, do we have other ordinance changes to make?
We've not collected a whole lot, you know, knowing that this was coming and that this was going to be, you know, the bulk of what we did. Chip had put forward a suggestion about including something about docs.
Yes.
But that's really the only thing that I remember that we've backcued up, so.
Okay. Well, whatever you want. But it seems like we'll need like probably at least three meetings.
I I I would, I would defer to what the chair wants.
Others, Peter, Brandon, Don, Don? Two weeks enough time, you know, and push it into February.
From the February, will we have three meetings? Will we have the three meetings at a time?
I I think we would, I mean, you know, one, one thing I could do is I can take a look at those drop dead dates and come up with a proposed schedule. And if we needed, for instance, to schedule an additional meeting just to cover some of this material, I mean, that's an option. Yeah, yeah.
We could do January thirtieth. It doesn't matter to me. One would work for fourteen, probably.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's an option as well, the, you know, the thirtieth of January. When are you back?
The day after.
Okay, so if we, if we moved it, if we move the twenty thirty meeting to the thirtieth, you would, you would be eligible for that and it would give us an additional week for review. Jack and John? What do you think about that?
That works for me.
Is a meeting from the twenty third to the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Bill, is that one for you?
Sure.
Hello, are you, are you looking at the turnaround submit? War articles? Is that the deadline you're talking about?
Probably. I have a, I have an email in front of me from Eric that has a whole series of things.
March projections and deadline for warrants.
Well, he had, when I could talk to him for various reasons, he said that there, you know, we would have some additional flexibility for this. And I don't know what all the reasons for, but. Okay, why don't we target that then? It seems to work. January thirtieth instead of the twenty third. It'll give us an additional week and we can try to get as much work done as possible on the thirtieth and see where it can stand.
Does that work for Jamal?
That works for me. That that evening's open and I will still work to get you the changes as soon as I can. Dear, I'll, I'll aim to send them to the town the week of sometime next week, probably not on Tuesday. If we're not meeting on the twenty third, but certainly like the seventeenth or the eighteenth, I should, I should be done with the work.
That would be great.
Sounds good.
Okay, was there anything else specifically you wanted to present to us tonight? And are there any other questions from planning board members before we close tonight's meeting?
I think this was a really good start and overview. I don't have anything else to present. I think the next step will be to go line by line with the proposed modifications.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? Suggestions?
Sounds like a good plan.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Jamel. We appreciate all the work you've done thus far and it was good to have you here tonight. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for having me and safe travels tonight and and tomorrow. It's gonna be pretty interesting, so we'll talk to you soon. Thanks.
Thanks. Good night.
Bye. See you later.
Okay, I think we have a plan. Did you have anything else?
Just out of curiosity, you know, is, is there, are we, are there a lot of short term rentals in this town?
Really?
We know?
Really?
I have no idea.
Summertime, yes.
I would say I was, I've been living here for forty-three years, but I assumed that the rentals were mostly all summer or longer.
No. Go on, so long, go on. Any of the sites. And Airbnb's prolific. So the answer is yes, but again, I didn't mean to overstep or step. But I'm really afraid that if we go through this exercise, you got a lot of stuff to look at, a lot of things to do. And then just to have it ruined by somebody in a political way that focuses in just on short term and shoots it down at the, you know, town meeting, where are we?
Yeah, and I, you know, and I'm certainly not suggesting that we focus on that. Nor am I insisting that it be included, but I know it's an issue. And, you know, and and perhaps the answer is that, you know, we talk about it in a different, different context. Okay, well, thank you all very much.
Can I ask, could I ask, can I ask Chip one question?
Sure, go ahead.
Check it out.
Do you know what's going on there across from across from John's place there? There's a house or something that's on that lot?
Seventeen.
You know where I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah. It's a tiny house going there.
Okay.
Is that a tiny house or mobile home?
A tiny mobile home.
No, it's not a mobile home. This is a house to put on a slab.
Looked like it's on a chassis. Looked like it was on a chassis.
It was, yeah, it was chassis did. It will be, it's set on, it will be set on a slab. And I believe that there's gonna be a they're gonna go another step and partition the land, have a help me out, subdivide the land. There'll be an extra lot put. It's an in-law apartment is what it really is.
Is it an ADU?
Don't start. Possibly, I mean, that guy wouldn't find it. He's got plenty of acres to put something there, so.
Yeah, okay. But you know about it and everything, everything is square with you.
Yes, yes, he's a new, new resident, came from Alaska. They've done a wonderful job with the house and that's, that's gonna be mobbing law.
Yeah, the house looks really good.
Amazing if you get a chance to go inside and see it. They really did it historically nicely.
So they creating a subdivision? Is that their goal?
No, 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 just subdivide, just divide a lot, a lot.
Well, thanks, Chip.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Yeah, watch out for the snow tomorrow.
Nice, right now.
Or tonight. It's already coming, huh? All right, have a good evening.